You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the July 8th, 2024 meeting of Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county.org.
Welcome everyone to the July Town Council meeting. Can we please stand in front of which? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Constitution, which stands one nation, America, in its own right. Meg, could you do more?
Sure. Please thank you are here. Council President Joshua.
Here.
Council Members.
Here.
Janie Haley.
Here.
Anita Rogers.
Here.
Shannon Wojcik.
Here.
Lord Treasurer Van Palen, I am here. Administrator and Chief of Police Mark Swistec is absent. Attorney Chris Lowkey.
Here.
And we have our contact Trista Hudson on as well. That concludes the roll.
Thank you. The only opening remarks I would have was thank you to everyone for the ice cream social and the July 4th festivities. It was a great success once again, so thank you to the fire department, the police department, all the volunteers and civic. Once again, a stellar job. Thank you. Do we have? Oh, first we have approval of minutes. Council minutes from June 10th. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June.
Do you have a second? All second for discussion? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have any public comments?
Yes. How's it going today?
Good.
You're limited to three minutes, okay Mitch?
Hello? Hi.
Can you turn that on?
There we go.
Name and address?
Yes, hi. Mr. Mitch Stavel, 2020 Golden Gate Drive, Long Beach, Indiana, 46360. So my mother was homecoming queen. We have newspaper articles in Wright High School in Evansville, Indiana. Great news, I didn't know they had the newspaper articles all the summer. I have them here for you today. I also had a presidential campaign published in the newspaper. I've got that printed here for you today. I've sent you a few emails to the email for the town council. I'll use them. I am being maliciously prosecuted. I filed a lawsuit, a complaint against the employer of the complaint. The officer has been arrested for fraud and several felonies, non-related crimes. He should also be charged for false police report. I have exonerated evidence, which I mentioned last time. I presented that. I've sent that to the governor. I've sent that to the state appointed council, Maldenka and Frank Rodriguez. They're still pending proceedings in court. It's ridiculous, it's been going on for months. They challenged competency, and I'm clearly competent, so public information, public record, social media, everything clearly proves competency. They said I was clearly competent, I was evaluated by two doctors, they said I was clearly competent, they said the reports would be done later that day. That was like over six months ago. So they've been proceeding one continuance after another, just wasting our time. We've had to make payments, continual payments every week. It's absurd. It's ludicrous. I'm also an IGFA world record holder since the age of 13. I have that here printed for you today. I'm Semester of C alumni, I'm Lawton High School alumni. I've made two 12-hour reality documentaries regarding Dr. Taylor Swift. We think it's possible that security could be involved, possibly US public service involved in the 9/11. We don't know, we haven't met, we're not sure exactly what's going on here. So we're releasing another documentary today. It's seven hours, 37 minutes. Everybody's invited to watch. You're invited to see my Instagram, Dig a Lot to Hero.
15 seconds, Meg.
All right, that's it. I've got a copy of the complaint here for you today. Presidential campaign published in the Dispatch newspaper, Mother's Homecoming Queen, newspaper articles, and IGFA World Record for Town Council. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Meg. Thank you. Any more public comments in the room? Any public comments on Zoom? Not hearing any, we'll move on to committee reports. Police Department report. Chief gave to me to read. He gave me the whole incident report, was sent to all the council, I think everybody's reviewed it, so. Maybe yeah, turn that one off, see if I can get it. Thank you. So I'm just going to read the summary. The Long Beach Police Department responded to 481 calls for service when compared to 294 calls for service in 2023 for an increase of 187 calls for service. During the month of June, 16 incident reports were documented. A total of nine individuals were arrested. One arrest for felony OWI, two arrests for misdemeanor OWI, two misdemeanor arrests for resisting law enforcement, one misdemeanor arrest for reckless driving, one misdemeanor arrest for driving with a suspended license, and one misdemeanor arrest for driving without ever obtaining a license. Any questions?
Does it outline how many of those are in Long Beach versus the outlined areas that we also covered?
Does say.
It was a 400?
Doolan Beach was 13 hours and 110 miles, and Michiana Shores was 37 hours and 173 miles. And yes, under each one that it lists, it tells where they were at.
Okay. I'm curious to see that.
The report that he sends out too always has the addresses, so you can figure that out.
Yeah. Okay, any more questions on that?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Town Administrator, again I'll read Chief Swistec's report. Town Administrator Summary Report. There's a job description request for approval under new business. The council received the job description for the Training Division Commander for the Police Department. The HR Committee has reviewed the job description, and on the agenda under new business, it would be a recommendation to the council to approve. Community Center Roof Update and Hail Damage. Our insurance adjuster was advised to update the quote to include the copper gutters to match the original gutters. The original quote did not include copper, they quoted aluminum. J&amp;B West Roofing and our adjuster are working on updating the scope of work. The goal is to have the quote presented to the council at your August 12th meeting. Septic Update for the Public Safety Building. John McQuestion at Soil Solutions was emailed the week of June 24th. There have been no updates or questions from the State Department of Health, waiting for their final approval. We hope to have. Sorry. We hope to have additional information for the August 12th Town Council meeting. 2025 CCMG Paving Project Update. The Town Council Clerk were emailed with the updated cost estimates on Thursday, June 27th and July 5th. Meg and Trista were asked to confirm that the $643,813.72 is available in the 2025 capital plan. Our CCMG grant application will be submitted prior to July 15th. The grant deadline is July 31st. It will be later on the agenda, seeking council approval. July 4th Holiday Calls for Service Update. 34 calls for service with no arrests or major concerns to pass along. The council was emailed the summary on July 5th for their reviews. F-550 Truck Purchase Update. At the June 10th meeting, the council approved the purchase of a new F-550 truck for the Public Works Department. The truck has been ordered, estimated delivery date is two to four months. Summer Newsletter. The town website has a summer newsletter posted. We also emailed a newsletter to all residents through the town website mass email portal. Republic Services and Trash Collection Contract. Chief spoke with Jim Metros with Republic Services on Friday, June 28th, asking for an update. He was assured that they are in the final stage of reviewing their proposal to the town. At the August 12th council meeting, the chief should have a contract extension for our review. That's it on the Town Administrator Report. Any questions?
No.
Volunteer Fire Department, Dave Elbers.
Our favorite part of the evening.
Good evening, everyone. This is the report for the activity for the first half of 2024. Fire calls year to date, we stand at 38, the actual month of June. We had seven calls. One was a gasoline, one was a good intent call, and five false alarms. Our average turnout per fire call is stands at seven, because we have a fully involved building, our turnout comes to about 18 members typically. Medical calls to date, 46 this year, 48 last year. We have 13 calls. Unfortunately, an individual passed away. We have four heart attack, three respiratory, one injury. Three sick persons in the average turnout of members per medical call stands at five. The average response time for fires stands at five minutes, and medical stands at four. Members have donated to the town 1,351 hours. Just two other items I'd like to just mention. As Joy mentioned about the ice cream social, this was our 20th year of doing that, and it, first year I became chief, I was sitting at a breakfast up at Michiana Shores Pancake Breakfast, and I noted all the neighbors, all the community coming in for that, and I thought, we should do something like that. And I thought, pancakes, no? So I thought, we'll do an ice cream social. So I brought back to the membership, said I'd like to propose something, and it would be an ice cream social. Oh, that's a great idea. Then I said, there's one other item. The ice cream's free. I want to see kids smiling with seven or eight different flavors, Mr. Wong. Tons of toppings. And over the years, we had that happening, and we put a boot out to just, the intention is to hopefully cover our costs, and we did, but it is, continues to be a wonderful thing. And with the new building, the new location, it was even, they said the line was ongoing, so that's a good thing. That's what Long Beach is all about. The other item is more of a serious nature, and watching the number of golf carts moving about town, electric lawn mowers. I have a snow blower on a stick that is a lithium battery. That is a serious, becoming a serious problem in this country because of the fires, and they're intense fires. We even bought a thermal blanket that if we have an electric EV car that is unfired, instead of putting water on it, we get a blanket and try to smother it. And I just went online, and I think we're going to be posting some things on our website and whatever social media outlets we have, just a fact sheet for people. But one of the, some of the, just simple guidelines. Only use and purchase batteries from the original equipment manufacturer, as these meet manufacturer standards. Knockoff brands may not meet those standards. Remove batteries from chargers when fully charged. Only charge batteries with adult supervision. Do not charge batteries that have been damaged. Recycle them at the appropriate facility. Don't charge batteries in exit areas of your home, including scooters. Charge batteries in an area with working smoke detectors. And the reason it just hit me again, I resubscribed to the Mackinac Weekly Newspaper, Mackinac Island, and I was reading that they had a structure fire in one of the employee dormitories, and it was a result of an E-bike charging, and they were able to, no serious damage, but once again, the fire chief said, we've already had six of these fires. And I just think if something that, as we have the golf carts and everything else in our society that's battery operating, we just need to take heed of some, I think straightforward and simple guidelines. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
I do have a quick question. Do you have any recommendations for, so I have a golf cart stored in the garage. Do you have any recommendations for any kind of blanket that I would be able to purchase that would be reasonable, or just in case there was that kind of a fire, that I could put over it?
You could go to the extent of purchasing your own, but I mean, that's why we went and acquired. The fact that, well, you don't have a detached garage.
No.
We've also had other issues with batteries in garages in the house because of the batteries and seal coming off, so I think it's, be monitored charging, and if it's fully charged, you unplug it or let it rest.
If I may offer, there is a fire blanket, Prepared Hero manufactures them. I actually have them for myself and all my children for kitchen fires, but they have, come in different sizes. So it's called Prepared Hero, and they're fire blankets.
Actually, I've seen, I have seen something along those lines. It shows you how serious it is. It's more than just a toaster fire.
David, if you have any info, we can post that on the website.
Okay.
We could do a blessed email.
Okay. I think this would just be helpful. I think that's under writer laboratories or.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any Fire Commission report, Dave?
We did have July 8th, the next meeting is obvious person, we're just, we're figuring back into the quarterly meeting schedule with Police Commission's access. Police Commission meets before us, so three we meet at four, that's the next one's obvious person.
Okay, thanks. Public Works, Kendra.
Stop 18 is complete, pretty much. A nice natural foot traffic path has developed, so people can get easily now down to the sand from the stairs. We're going to still wait and see how that forms after the winter, or when winter comes, about what to do about metal stairs and probably railing, but at least now it's a great, people can get down and have been able to use the beach. Anything extra on that? John, I know you've been intricately involved in that, so thanks for your help, but, okay. And for the upcoming Lake Shore Drive future paving project, they need, Haas is going to need to do an engineering study, so something for us all to think about, and everyone really, we have to decide or get to work with them on figuring out the width of the road. We want it to be 22 feet or 24 feet. So we talked about in the meeting, there's different parts of Lake Shore Drive, some go like this and then others. So it's going to be, it's, some people are going to be happy, some people are going to be not happy, but you know, that's something in the future that we're going to have to look at with Haas, and the first step is they'll have to do this engineering study first, so Haas is going to do that. There's no time set for that yet, though. We ordered some stay off the rock signs for 18 and 21, just to be sure kids don't climb on any rocks that might look enticing at those two areas, because there's still some revetment boulders that are out in the open. And the next meeting is set for July 22nd.
Thank you. Park Board, Kendra.
Again, just as Joy said, everything went great for the movie in the park and the things that the Park Board Committee and Sarah did with the campers and the movie in the park, same night as the ice cream social, so that was great. And summer camp continues through August 2nd. Art in the Park's going to be July 27th, and right now, today, I saw art out there, so they're resurfacing the tennis courts for new stripes and crack filling and painting and power washing and all that stuff. And two nets have already been delivered and they're using them, and some signs that were requested, just about use of the court have been ordered, but they're not in yet. And then the last thing is we're still dealing with some trees at stop 29 that were planted on town property that need to come out, but the Park Board's working with Chris and the homeowner on that, so just reporting with that still ongoing. That's it.
Thank you. Community Center, Anita.
We had no meeting for July 1st.
Budget and Finance.
I have to say it again with my microphone out. Lord Treasurer said.
Please.
Community Center did not meet July 1st, and there is no rescheduled meeting for July.
Thank you. Budget and Finance, Meg.
We met on June 5th, and the budget process was discussed. We planned a workshop that was held on June 26th, and at that workshop, it was a good two hours, we heard from department heads on the budget requests. The committee will review for the next meeting, which is on July 17th at 11:00. We moved the regularly scheduled July 3 meeting to the 17th. It's also not at 1:00, like normal, but at 11:00. Hopefully by the next meeting, we will have estimates from the state on revenues, where we receive like gas and the CD, and then we can have an estimate on what we can afford. The committee can then make recommendations to council after that. I am researching the state program, which is the Indiana Local Government Investment Pool. I'm leaning towards trying this as opposed to CD lathering. A portion of those investments used our T bills, and it's very liquid, so the committee will ask for that in the next meeting. That's about it. Some questions?
Thank you. Human Resources, JD.
The Human Resource Committee met on June 19th, we completed compensation, recommendations of Lord Treasurer and the Employment Status and Records, we called it a handbook. Our next meeting is July 17th, where we'll be reviewing employee responsibilities and the health and safety components of the handbook, also addressing the hiring process checklist and reviewing police compensation.
Thank you. Tree Board, Ellen.
We're on the quarterly meetings, but you did ask, oh, I'm sorry. We're on quarterly meetings now, and Anita, you did ask for all the dates, so I have the dates for 2024, 2025, for our meetings. And then, because we had talked about the clear sightlines, you had asked me to give the top 10. There you go. So, and we can talk about it now, or we can talk about it some other time, I, you know, these are the, I have one for each of you. I went around and looked at those intersections that we, that we literally went through these intersections, and it's hard to see, and I'm talking, I'm not supposed to be at the microphone. So some of the intersections, if you drive through them, you can see that there's bushes or trees or something like that, that are keeping it from being a difficult to make, to see pedestrians or people walking. On the list, you can see I took credit, even though I can't take total credit, Tom painted the corner of Foxdale and Hazelton Drive and cleared it all the way down to Lake Shore Drive. And then the owners of, at Open Wall and Flormore, where they, that was another one that was completely cleared it out, it's all gone. So that was, they did that on their own, so that is not, no longer difficult to do, because it's a weird intersection. You come down there and you got to go this way down to Foxdale, so it was really hard to see, especially with people walking. All the other ones are clear cut. And then it was, we were going through it, we're coming out onto the stops and turning on Lake Shore Drive, and typically the stop signs are before these brick bridges, and then you go beyond these bridges, and some stops have people that have walls and biologin, so you don't even get to see where you stop, you have to go like another 12 feet to see if someone's coming down the street. So I know a lot of people aren't going to like, I know lots of Lake Shore Drive are going to be doing a lot of stuff with this. We were thinking that, why not put the stop sign on Lake Shore Drive? Have them stop so people could come out of those streets, especially Ridge More, 18. It's, you come out and hits a house, and then there's the stop, and the stop sign's on the other side of the bridge. It's just, you know, they're just, we're just looking at intersections that are hard for people to see. And considering this last, 4th of July, with the amount of people on the street, because now we have everybody on scooters, buggies, I don't know, I think the club carts and all that have probably doubled that are on the street, so there's, I'm just worried, you know, I think everybody's worried about the traffic on there. So maybe you'll go to 10 feet for Lake Shore Drive, so anyway, so that's all I have to say.
Wish we could.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Building Commission met on June 14th. Permits approved were 3007 MoMA Portal, it was a new build post BZA, 1611 Lake Shore Drive was repaired and replaced, 1801 Lake Shore Drive for erosion control, 2105 Polken Wall with seven-foot fence in the side rear, 2036 Lake Shore Drive decks and seawall stairs, 2006 Somerset landscaping. Permits denied, 3007 Moore Road for landscaping because they're already over 60% coverage. Building Department software and training has resumed, and I believe the porta pott at 31 has been removed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I will let you know if it returns.
Okay. Thank you. And the Building Commission meets again this Friday. Any questions? BZA met on 6/12. There was a public hearing for 1514 Lake Shore Drive. Their variance was approved, and their next meeting is this Wednesday for a preliminary hearing for 1902 Monrovia.
What was the variance for? Do you know, 1514 Lake Shore Drive? Do you remember?
The second floor, part of the first floor is a little bit in the setback, and they wanted, they're putting on a second floor, and they wanted the second floor to be equal to the first floor, so they approved that. Okay. 1915.
1514 Lake Shore Drive. Oh, I see. That was a second.
Okay. APC, Anita.
Advisory League Commission met in June. We discussed the comprehensive plan, we discussed parking ordinances, and those are being sent back to the Building Commission for review, and they will talk about it there, and then at some point make a recommendation to APC.
Thank you. Building Revenue Report, Meg.
There were 33 permits issued, total of $178,198.90 with revenue of $13,231. Free lodging permits issued, total of $536. One streetcar permit with revenue of $100. There were legal expenses paid in June to Bradshaw Nelson James of $4,975. Accounting charges paid in June to Center Company worth $5,438.51. I would ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unfinished business. The Public Safety Building Progress Update was included in the chief's report while the Septic. Welcome Signs Update, stop 13, sign next steps.
Couple things here. The stop 13 email, I forwarded to everybody who's a little bit independent from the welcome signs.
So that was just sent to Joy and myself, but I wanted to share that with that email from Suki and to the rest of the council. Then the entrance signs. Entrance signs. Thank you Theresa Went who used her graphic artist to come up with a very conceptual idea of what we're looking at. She asked Joy, you had it, the concept would be a little bit more refined with perhaps some wrought iron that would match the stops a little bit more. The different boat would match the ones that are on the stops. And also the other logos that are with the police department, with the fire department and bring some consistency even, even there. So that is a general concept. Granted, there's footprint issues in variety of locations and size and scale. So that comes to my next question. One, any comments here about general ideas before we start?
Is the, that black picture that looks like, is it going to be like a picture? Or is it going to be more like engraved how like, like colleges will have like, you know, Indiana University establish whatever? Cause this looks like a sticker sort of.
Well, it was a sticker because she, she did it kind of by herself. This is very much done ad hoc together. The idea is the concept to be much more refined in like the university or a proper, proper entryway. And perhaps you do the wrought iron approach, backlight it and have it do. I mean, that's the next step is to really get a better concept.
Cause I like having the pillar and the thing. I just, this reminds me of like the, cause I saw this earlier today and I pulled up some stuff on my phone, my phone. I'll show you later, but like it, it's just, it's like it's engraved deeper. So instead of like a black background, you would just engrave in black letters. I don't know if engraving is the right word, but like imprint it versus, yeah, okay.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. People on Zoom are can't hear. So try and talk into them.
So can you, that would be the, the next step we would take to professional. Who would know to know how to design a sign that would be appropriate. And look at different variants of that general concept.
Gotcha. Okay. Perfect. That was my only question. I just, that's it for me.
Then the next step I have or a question I have here, there's no feedback, just again on a very rough concept of the sign is, should we be coming back to the council? Should we go into the park district? Who should we kind of be interacting with as, as the government go and develop?
I would say that the police department and the town and the street department have always been in charge of signs. Parks already submitted their budget for next year and their capital budget with new tennis courts coming. I don't think they're going to have any money. So I think it should come to the council and we should budget for it through the town.
Okay. And then the next steps for size and scales, where should we go for surveys and proper, proper layout? To which is going to drive a lot of these actual, actual science, the size of these signs.
Would we need Chris to survey each one of those areas? Or can we look on Beacon first?
Beacon's not going to give you anything definitive. So if there's any properties that are in question, you're going to need to make sure that.
Yeah, we'll probably have to survey every area. So we'll have to add that into the cost.
Okay. So it's really nothing existing for even for to replicate the existing signs in my footprint. We don't have anything.
Not that I know of.
So do you have, do you have to talk to? Oh, maybe work with Tom off on that, right? Tom, if anybody knows Tom.
Tom would, oh yeah. We just put in signs and I remember a conversation being had over the placement, let's say on Chaussette. Because of what land is over by Long Beach versus Gulf Forest or whomever or Nipstow, because they have that area. So there was a big discussion in, that was only last year. So there should be some layouts where we put the existing welcome signs, you think?
Well, the sign we were kind of put up before a few years ago was really, we got permission from Hacienda right there along where the golf course fences and, but you know, that one fell by the wayside. So.
Okay. I'll reach out to Tom.
I was going to say, I'm sure that if you're exactly doing the same signs, there must be a problem. But I don't think they are going to be the same size. And that's probably where we just want to make sure. If you were going to have, if it's identical, then probably.
Yeah, that's, that's. Okay.
I, I did have a comment. I wanted to go back to the stop 13 email. So I think in my opinion, the stop, at stop 13 where it's looked so crowded, that the stop 13 sign is on the right side of the street and it should be on the left. So that could be an easy fix to help with that clutter because there's the stop 13 sign. Then there's the black welcome to Long Beach sign. And then there's the blue and red look, welcome to Long Beach sign. But stop 13, for some reason is the only stop that has the stop 13 sign on the. South. I guess that'd be the south side or whatever, the right side, the right side. If you're going, if you're heading north. So there's room. I mean, you could move that over to the left where it should be. Cause 14 through 31 are all on the left. So Tom could just pick that up and move it over there and then that helps. So then all you'll see is the black, which I personally like that black welcome to Long Beach sign. It's old. And then you don't have that other blue sign until 20 more feet or something. So Tom could just pick that up and move it. Right?
Yeah. As long as it's not going in someone's yard.
Well, it's on town. It'd be on, it's still on town, um, in town Eastman. It's not in anyone's, there's a space because it's, it's.
But as you know, everyone's driveways are in town Eastman. I'm like sure.
It's, there's grass right there because I just drove by there before I came here tonight. So here's, there we go. Between those two houses because it's right across, it's literally right across. There's grass and there's a gas pipe, gas line thing right there right now. So that's just right across. That, that would help reduce some of that clutter if you want to.
There's one sign down.
Okay. I will send, I will send an email about this.
Okay. Any more questions? Thank you. Insurance claim, community center roof. That was also included in the chief's report. New business. We all received in our packet, a training division commander job description from the police department. Did everybody have a chance to look over that?
Yes.
Does anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I, unless I missed it, is it a new, is it a promotion for a current officer? Or is it a new officer that is getting hired with the title of division, training division commander? Cause that wasn't.
The first option.
Promotion for a current, okay. Okay. Gosh. Thanks.
I would recommend if we could table this or review it at the August 1st meeting that we have with the police commission.
When's that next police commission meeting?
August 1st.
I don't know if the timing is a problem or not. I don't have a problem with that.
Did you guys talk about it at the last commission? Okay. So it hasn't even been talked about.
No. First, yeah.
Gotcha. I think that makes sense.
Emailed over.
Okay.
Like a chance to review it, talk about it.
Sure. Okay. We'll table till August meeting. Okay. Ordinance number 2024-06, additional appropriations. Meg.
Yes. Before the council's ordinance 2024-06, we are going to need 20,000 more in capital in the C C D funds here. We've put paving expenses in there and expenses related to the fire station upgrade. And there's plenty of cash balance to do this and still have the capital plan staying in place. So it's just kind of releasing a little bit more cash towards the engineering and paving costs.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
And Chris, this is.
Well, I will defer to Trista who believe you said she's on, but I think this is the one that has been advertised as public hearing. Which I believe is set in this evening. So you know, plus Trista says otherwise, I don't, I didn't prepare this. But to open a public hearing, a lot of those that must speak for or against and then close that.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing for additional appropriation ordinance 2024-06. Would anyone like to speak in favor of it? Anyone on Zoom? Would anyone like to speak against it? Anyone on Zoom? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing?
Yep. And just as a reminder before you forward, this is one of those that you do have the opportunity to pass and suspend your rules. So that if there is a motion and that is the inclination, someone could make a motion to suspend the rules and consider it on first and second reading in the same meeting in which it's introduced. That would require a unanimous vote to do that. And then after that, it will be the majority of the council if you're inclined to approve it.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Rule said then suspended.
Now we can make a motion to.
Would anyone like to make a motion to accept this on first reading?
First, you can do first and second.
First and second reading?
Yeah. Make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-06 first and second reading.
Second.
Any discussion?
Did Shannon second that?
Kendra.
Kendra. Thank you.
I have Peter.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Housen Associates invoice number 2024361-03 for $120 for the 2024-2 C C M G grant application for payment approval. Anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes then. Housen Associates invoice number 2022316-10 for stop 17 and 18 work for payment approval. This is for $6,871.21. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We have the C C M G grant application for approval. That was in our packet. It's interesting to see the map, I thought, of all the streets that are going to get redone. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that grant application.
So I guess do you want a motion in the second and then we can discuss.
Do we have a second for discussion? I'll second for discussion. Okay. Any discussion?
So I wanted to just discuss funding for it. So there is room of capital plan for the 2025 capital plan for the cost of this project. We had already built the big chunk of this into the capital plan and now we would increase it. Funds could come from C C D and general fund cash could kind of come from various places. Just with the understanding that the capital plan currently for 25 has excess 170,000. This would take our excess down to around 66,000. So there would be less to help with the capital shortfall that we had in 26. So our capital plan is, can be, you know, can shift and be adjusted. Again, 25 is okay, but if we use, let's say, we could use more stormwater funds because as Mark Stenhouse states, a good portion of this can fall on your stormwater, I believe up to 500,000 of the project. It's even more than that. Yet we don't have enough stormwater cap for that full amount, which, because we spent some stormwater the last two years.
So, so this expenditure will occur in 2024, five, I'm sorry, 2025. This call we're doing, it's called the second call. They allow you to do a call in January, a call in fall. So this call we're submitting for by the end of this month will be awarded hopefully. Last time they did it went all the way into November. Sometimes it's even into the first week of December before they let you know if it's awarded. Once it's awarded, then we're committed to this expenditure of about 643, which is what I think Mark put in the.
He came with an adjusted number in the sign page of 600. It'll be about 15, 20 less than that because the match amount, the estimated cost is going to decrease slightly. So.
So the stormwater portion of this project is above 500,000. When we originally designed it, we didn't have St. Lawrence included. St. Lawrence has been added to the project and that will include some drainage work. So the drainage work will be a little north of 500,000. If you use 500,000 and you take 25% of that, we could conceivably take $125,000 of stormwater funds and use it to pay that portion of the 25% that we have to pay as a town. So your commitment of this 643, that would be reduced, if you can think about it that way, from the general funds and the C C D funds that Meg's mentioned. There are also some other smaller sources that are available. For instance, this year, I don't know if we got the member or talked to Trista about this yet, but you have paving money. You know, every year we always did paving years all through history. When we do these C C M G projects, we don't always use the traditional money that's in M V H one that we always used to use for paving. We don't traditionally use that. Sometimes we do other things with it, whatever we paid Snally's and things like that last year. So that worst case of 643 will be somewhat reduced in terms of what you got to come up with out of your general funds. If that makes any sense. I love that. I'm moneying this up for you, but I wanted you to understand that.
Good question, John. Does the engineering cost come out of that?
So if you can kind of think of it this way, the total project is 1,715,000. If you saw the letter from Sam from AS.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the July 5th letter. If you take 25% of that, I think that's approximately 430,000 called. We generally think that when you have the engineering, once the project is awarded, then they have to package it up, bid it, and then watch the project for us, particularly when you're doing stormwater. So then that, what we typically account for is about 10% of the overall project will be the engineering portion of that. We also have some upfront money that we've, that we've already expended. You guys have authorized this evening some money for AS for the package to be put together to give it to the end dot and say, hey, this is what we'd like to do. So they've already spent that and they've already authorized it. Then you have the commitment for the project. Then you have some engineering costs. That's the 10%. So that's another, call it 172,000. So really, if you think in terms of 428 plus 172, that gets your commitment up to about 610. And then you have this original money you already spent. I don't know what that money is right now. You could figure it out. It's like 30 or 20 or something. 25 was up to 25. Yeah. So, so that's, if you add all that up, that's where you get up to this 643,000 or so.
Okay.
But again, that commitment now, that includes the 25% for the 1.7, which you're going to be able to mitigate a little bit with some paving funds that we have. I think in M V H we have like 50 grand or something from this year and probably another 50 next year, plus this 125 of stormwater. I'm not trying to oversell the thing. I just might kind of be thinking about what your commitment actually is. You've got some other sources.
Okay.
If that makes any sense.
Yeah. Thank you.
July 1st. I just, for those, the total work for the project is this million dollar, mostly rehab improvement of 12 streets in town, plus improvement and removal of existing.
the rehab improvement of 12 streets in town, plus improvement and removal of existing new drainage structures. Just so everybody has a sense of what we're talking about, this is a big project. That's why the numbers we're speaking out are at this scope range, just so everyone understands, I'm zooming here, the size and scale of the project.
This project was on the books almost three years ago. We had some problems when we didn't fill some paper, prior to passing it through, I'm sorry, two weeks ago, files and paperwork, we couldn't do it the year we wanted to do it. So we keep moving forward. We now take a supportive way, so we're considering numbers to it every, and then we'd like to pull trigger. You never know what money's going to drive. I mean, at some point, the end I can just pay this, or not, or the way, so we don't have to miss the opportunity to spend it. It's a lot of money, but I think if 25% is reasonable.
It's, again, it's just with the understanding that the capital is going to need to be adjusted in the next four years because we're spending a larger chunk, which we can't afford right now, but it could lead to less 21 money. You know, we're going to have to assess which projects we want to take on in '26, '27, '28.
Okay.
Joy, how many miles per channel? How many miles of.
Can you guys talk up here? Otherwise people.
Let's do that.
Right.
I don't have the detail right now and you'd have to go through, you'd have to take that, you'd have to take that diagram and scale it off if you can get. It's a significant project, but like I say, half a million, but probably north of half a million, probably like closer to 550 or so is stormwater, which we've been trying to do all along, which is so, it's so great to be able to take, you know, be able to do that. So I could get it for you, but I don't.
This gentleman just asked.
Sorry?
What's a, what would be a?
I have a, I have to sit down and run all the numbers. You know, we can take a wheel out there and run it off for you, but I don't have that for the time.
Who knows how many miles?
I don't understand the question. Are you talking about how many miles we have in town? How many miles are involved in this project?
In the 12 streets.
I don't have that for you.
No, no.
Sir, if you want to, after the meeting, I can show you a diagram that we have so that you can see the streets.
Okay. Any other questions?
Trista, did you have anything you wanted to add to that? No?
No, I don't think so. I'm having some trouble hearing everybody today except a few minutes ago when John was sitting off to the side. He was the most clear, but I think everything's been covered, Meg, that you and I discussed earlier today, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion? For what? The CCMG grant application.
We had a, we had a motion for Commander, a second for Joy, to approve prior to discussion. So you could take a vote for everybody.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Are there any council comments?
I do have one thing that I forgot. I should have said it in one of my updates. Again, thanks to the police and the fire department for all their work and I just want to say also thank you to Alex Lopez, one of the volunteer firemen who was out in the, wasn't that early in the morning, maybe 10 o'clock, 10:30 on the 5th, cleaning up an absolute disgusting amount of trash that was at Stop 20-ish, not town, not when you come down. But I found some ordinances that exist in the state that you're not allowed to litter within 200 feet of water. So I'm just going, I just wanted to put that out there. I'm going to try and work with Mark and see if there's something we can come up with next year so that this doesn't happen. Maybe a way that people can, you know, they're supposed to be registering their bonfire. There's not supposed to be fireworks on the beach, but, you know, people are still going to have a good time, but at least something to make people stay responsible because it was a whole truckload of trash. And he said it every year, same location, and he picks it up every year. So I kind of thought he should have left it. So maybe the neighbors could shame the people who left it or whatnot, but I just want to talk to Mark and see if there's something we can do about that next year because he was sweating hard and he had a whole truckload full of trash and it was all fireworks that were going to wash into the water, all that residue, whatever that stuff is, paper, and then mostly garbage from fireworks. I mean, tables and tables of truckload. So I'm going to try and work on that because I think we can hopefully do better next year on that.
Any other council comments? Claims approval, Meg?
Town checks, number 20814 to 20890, total of $957,923.19. Water checks, number 54975 was voided and numbers 55030255056, total of $131,184.52. Payroll, total of $8,091.65. And as for a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion. There's a second for discussion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. We did that in under. All.